Thank you. We are back from executive session. This is the North Andover Select Board and Licensing Commissioners Meeting of Monday, March 31, 2025. If everyone could please rise, if you're able, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll open up tonight with public comment. Per Select Board policy, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the Select Board. It is a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of town business. The Board may respond to a public comment by taking it under consideration when deliberating on an agenda item, or referring the item to the administration for appropriate action or response. Public comment should be for a period of up to 15 minutes, with speakers being allowed three bins to present their material. Anticipating we have some public comment tonight, we also do have a lengthy agenda ahead of us, so I do ask people to be very mindful of the time limits there. Is anyone here for public comment this evening? Yes, ma'am, please. Just your name and address.
I'm Leslie Frazier. I am head of Friends of Memorial Park, and I just wanted to call your attention to the newly revised design for the Global War on Terror Memorial that's to be dedicated at Patriots Memorial Park in 2026, on the 25th anniversary of 9/11. This plan is very different from the one you approved last September. My number-one concern is that there's been very little public input on this new design. Last October, Commander Clark from the VFW presented the original design to about 30 neighbors and friends of the park at the library. He did an excellent job, and all but one were impressed with the plan and understood the importance and significance of honoring those North Andover citizens who have served our country during those 40 years. I've sent out 40 to 50 emails to many of those same folks, and have heard, one way or another, from 20 neighbors, garden club members, improvement society members, and park friends. Seventeen had serious objections to the new design, and three liked it. The objections were to the design, not to the memorial itself, except for that one person. The objections were usually, "It's too busy or too fussy," and not in keeping with the simplicity of the other three memorials or the park itself. One common alternative suggestion was to have a single large stone with the Battlefield Cross on top, perhaps four-sided, two conflicts etched on each side. Etching might be a little less expensive than having bronze plaques, actually. I strongly believe that informing the public and allowing them to ask questions and voice opinions in one way or another goes a long way to the understanding and acceptance of the project. That certainly seemed to work when we took down 15 trees at the park last summer. We had had an open meeting and informed everybody what we were doing, and they understood. Perhaps another meeting or two at the library would help before town meeting, and I don't know of any other venue to do that at. Please consider this new revised design very carefully and thoughtfully. It will be a permanent and significant feature at the park for many, many years to come. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier. Does anyone else here for public comment?
Jeff Clark, the commander of the VFW. So, thank you for taking time to discuss the funding for the late 20th century conflicts in the Global War on Terror Monument. I understand the concerns raised by the Friends of Patriot Park, and I appreciate their dedication to the park's integrity and beautification. However, I think it's important to provide some clarity as to why the design change has evolved. Since our discussion last September, we've worked closely with monument companies and landscapers to refine the design and ensure it withstands a fitting tribute to our veterans. Where am I? Okay, sorry. Sorry. One key change is elevating the conflict pavers, which ensures visibility year-round. The original design had the account, did not account for the snow, so the pavers would have been hidden for months on end. To fix that, the companies all recommended we move the pavers vertically, so they're visible throughout the year. Additionally, the revised design incorporates a 360-degree view, at your request, allowing visitors to engage the memorial from all angles. While we understand the design might seem more complex than previous memorials at the park, this complexity is intentional. It's meant to represent the collective history of four decades of service, including three wars and five conflicts, rather than focusing on a singular war, just like the other conflicts. We believe this approach, though different, is most respectful and effective way of honoring the legacy of those who served. It creates a lasting tribute and will ensure future generations remember the sacrifices while balancing education and the respect of our past. Regarding the topic of not matching the other monuments of the park, we argue that none of the monuments match now. There are, other than the single unit honoring a single war. There's one large granite wall, one large granite block, and one boulder honoring two separate wars. This memorial is also honoring each conflict and war individually, but in a cluster. Additionally, these stones would look similar to the park entrance stone located directly next to the spot. While the Friends of Patriot Park and similar groups are essential in maintaining the park, and we value their input, they should not have the final decision-making authority over new memorials regarding veteran service to this nation. With the chairman of the CPC Board advocating on our behalf tonight, I respectfully request the Select Board's approval to secure the CPC funds needed, so we can move forward with this project to honor the veterans for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff Clark. Does anyone else here for public comment this evening? Please come to the podium, sir.
Members of the Select Board, my name is Dave Swarbrick, 14 Perry Street. I am also a member of VFW Post 2104. A little history about myself. With the exception of the first year of my life, I've lived in this town my entire life, all 54 years. I attended the original private Albert Thompson Elementary School, the middle school, and the original high school, the Open Concept. I served 30 years in the United States Army, serving from Gulf War I all the way through Afghanistan in 2020. This town has made great attempts to honor those that have served in the, from the Civil War to the War on Terror and everything in between, with monuments, parades, the solemn day of Memorial Day, and Veterans' Day, and just recently making my hometown a Purple Heart community. I remember taking a field trip when I was a kid. Mr. Kellen brought us there to visit the World War I Memorial. He stated it was very important that many had served and died for that monument to be there. At the time, I didn't fully understand. It was only fifth grade, but I knew there was a significance, and it would be important in my future. As the years go on, wars are fought, soldiers serve, and soldiers die. Our ability to remember those slowly fade away. The absolute awesome Spanish-American War Memorial, located right now in front of the school department, was the first original proposed as a Civil War memorial, soon after the war ended. But due to budgets and other things, as usual, it didn't take shape until it was created and dedicated June 14, 1913, as the Spanish-American War Memorial. The next great memorial was the World War I Memorial, the war, to end all wars, with the names listed. Its grand monument dedicated approximately 1922 to 1924, when the park was created. Then came the much smaller World War II Memorial. The names are on there. There's three times as many, but it's not as significant. Then in 1997 came the combined Korean War-Vietnam Memorial, Iraq. No names, no real distinction of what it is. A horrible way to pay tribute to a forgotten war and a hated war. And that, I will tell you, will be readdressed again in this committee at this meeting in the future. The memorial that we are proposing is for almost 40 years of covering a period of conflict since Vietnam. Our proposal is simple, as it can be, with meaning for our generation, without it being nonexistent or hidden, as other memorials have become. I ask that you approve our current design and funding, and I thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Let's put you on the spot a little bit. How many tours did you serve over six?
I did 13. I did five to Afghanistan, Gulf War I, Somalia, and Bosnia. All the stones that we're putting up, with the exception of Grenada and Panama, those are remarkable.
I know you were, and I wanted people to know the sacrifice that you have given.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome.
Would anyone else like to make public comment this evening?
Hello, members of the Select Board, fellow veterans, guests. My name is David Rubin. I live at 265 Hay Meadow Road. I am also, full disclosure, the chairman of the Patriotic Observance Committee, and the chairman, and the quartermaster of VFW Post 2104. Everything is said is spot-on, both sides. I respect the opposition as well. This is a small picture of Gloucester's Memorial that they just put up for World War II. It does have the vertical columns that we do plan on putting around a circle. Our Battlefield Cross sadly will not be anywhere near as tall or as large as this globe and eagle, but the concept is the same, and it's beautiful. You can go online and take a look at this. I urge everyone to. Beautiful monument. I know there was some concern in the letter that I read about children climbing on the monument.
Dave, can you make sure you're speaking to the microphone, please?
There was some concern about children climbing on the monument as well. They do make kind of a rope and chain system that you can put around monuments. I do not want this. I know my fellow veterans do not want this, but it is an option, should we have to address that in the future. I'll make my next points very brief. Every veteran from this town and across the United States takes an oath to serve their country. They write a check up to and in the amount of their life. Many don't make it home, and that's who this monument is to honor. But some do make it home, and it's their colleagues, their comrades, and their friends. And that's us, and every veteran I can speak for in this room. We owe the fallen, at the very least, to put the monument up that their friends, who served with, designed in their honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Would anyone else like to make public comment this evening?
Members of the Select Board, I'll be brief. Joe LeBlanc, Iraq-Afghan veteran, service officer for the town of North Andover in Boxford. And I feel as a leading advocate for veterans in North Andover, I should weigh in with just a few thoughts. If you look around this room, or in any of our ceremonies, you'll see veterans represented from all conflicts, going back to the Korean War, Vietnam, Desert Storm, Balkans, Somalia, Iraq, and Afghanistan. This is an accurate representation of today's veterans. The veterans who served in these theaters of conflict are asking and planning this memorial. They paid for it with their blood, sweat, and tears. Service members don't choose or plan what wars they take part in. They go where they're ordered. The conflicts of the last 50 years are complex, to say the least. There was a mention that no men have died in these conflicts, and that's just not true. Sean Gallagher was killed in action in Beirut, which, in my opinion, was the beginning of the Global War on Terrorism. Men and women do not have to die in combat to have sacrificed for a memorial to be built. I feel these sentiments speak to a somewhat disconnect between troops who fought in these conflicts and maybe some citizens, in the way they may perceive that. But the memorial's design is very thoughtful, educational in nature, and I think it validates the need for a memorial. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Boy, this makes me nervous. I'm Anne Armitage. It's the first time I've addressed a group like this. I serve on the North Andover Patriotic Observance Committee. I have a couple of comments. I'd like to echo, reinforce, and agree with everything that has already been said. One of the things I've done a little bit on is how the aesthetics of memorials have changed in the last 100 years, and they're quite different nowadays from what they were then. And in places where you have multiple memorials in a smaller area, you can find anything from, say, just look at Arlington, the McClellan Gate, the World War II Memorial, the World War I Memorial, the famous Vietnam Wall, and the Korean War Memorial, that's human figures. They're not anything like each other, but each one of them tells an enormous story. What I think that makes this proposal important is exactly what Jeff said. It is multiple wars in a single site. And also, what I would like to say is, for about 10 years, I have been doing research on the 35 names of the World War II monument. When I first looked at that and wondered what happened to each of them, because all those names were so familiar to me, they were living ones. They were guys we saw march in the parades every year when we were kids, on the way up to Ridgewood. And I asked the Historical Society of the Library and a town hall if anybody had any information about those who died. Nearly three dozen. Nobody knew anything. So, for the last 10 years, I have been researching those stories, and I now know all of them. Every single story would break your heart in a million pieces if you knew it. And so, the veterans who come home tend to live pretty quietly among us. But from my point of view, if they have their own wish for a monument that comprehensively covers the last several wars, I think they should be allowed to speak with their own voice, and that we should honor that voice in the monument that they choose and they design. Obviously, some issues will have to be looked at, for example, run-around safety. But every year at Memorial Day, there are a million kids in the audience, and they don't go tripping over headstones. Those things can be addressed. So, I would like to endorse it and thank them all. They are among the best people I have worked with anywhere. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no one else for public comment this evening? Sir? We'll have this to be our last public comment for the night.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Harker. I'm a 14-year resident of North Andover. I'm a proud Desert Storm-era United States Navy veteran. I'm here tonight to express my strong support for the proposed Veterans Memorial that will honor the brave men and women who have served in the Global War on Terror. These veterans' selfless service deserves to be recognized in a meaningful way. The memorial would serve as a poignant and lasting tribute to those who have sacrificed so much for our freedoms and the values that we hold dear. Patriots Memorial Park is a dedicated space for reflection and remembrance that provides veterans, their families, and the communities with a place to come together, reflect on the sacrifices made, and honor the legacy of service. This memorial, in its current design, would not only pay homage to those who have served in the various conflicts that make up the Global War on Terror, but also educate future generations about the importance of sacrifice, duty, and patriotism. It will be a powerful reminder of the courage and resilience of those who fought for freedoms we often take for granted, even the freedom of those who come here and selfishly complain about having to look at a memorial because they don't like the design. I believe that this memorial will bring the community together in a meaningful way and provide a symbol of gratitude and respect for all veterans. I strongly encourage you to support this important initiative. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thanks, sir. Thank you all for your public comment this evening. Okay, we're going to move on to our first item on new business. Item A is our public hearing for a poll petition from National Grid. A little bit of a change of pace. I'll take a motion on opening public hearing, please.
I'll move to open the public hearing for the petition for Massachusetts Electric Doing Business of National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated to install, locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across Mill Road.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are in a public hearing. Ms. Johnson?
Good evening. David Boucher, senior designer, National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street, right here in North Andover. Senator, I am before you, asking for a petition for a pole relocation, one pole that exists, and an additional pole. First, the pole relocation at the corner of Turnpike, Mill, and Willow Street, in front of Kinder Care, a business that's right there. Basically, we're asking to move for the DOT project, pole 2076, approximately 7.75 or eight feet, towards the Kinder Care business, away from the road, and approximately two feet towards Turnpike Street. Small relocation, but that's something that they're asking for us to do in order to comply with the plans that they have for that area during construction, when they do their project. Secondly, the second pole is the one that would be asking for. It's an additional pole, pole 2077-50, and that is to support the lines that are going down Mill Road. After we relocate the pole, it's going to create an angle, and what the support pole is, is to support the weight of the lines that are on top of the poles going down Mill, that's created from moving the pole. So, if the town sees fit, that would enable us to go forward for that and get that part of what the DOT needs ready, ready to go for them.
Okay. We are in a public hearing now. Does any member of the public wish to ask questions or comment on this? Okay. We've clicked out. All right. If there's no one from the public right now, move to close the public hearing, take a motion on that? So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is now closed. Okay, I'll leave it to the Board. Our next item is Gen. Item B, which is to vote on the poll petition for National Grid. So, with that, I will take a motion.
Can I just ask a qualifying question?
That's my issue.
So, I'm sorry. So, pole 2076 is being moved, slightly moved? Okay.
Yeah, approximately eight feet towards the, up the driveway.
Up the drive.
Yeah, which is still in the public way.
Yep.
Yeah. And then we'd eventually, once all the utilities transfer, the old pole go away.
Will go away. And what's the blue dot, the proposed JO pole location?
It is a support pole, 2077-50?
Yep.
Yeah.
No, it's 2076.
2076 is the one that's moving, approximately eight feet. It's the one closer to Turnpike Street.
But there's two dots on the thing. There's a blue one and a green one.
I don't see colors.
Oh, sorry.
It's going from here to here, and then this is the second.
The new one. Yeah, but what's that?
I think, but if I...
It's just already exist.
The way to describe it, the circle that's half-filled, black and white?
Yeah.
That's the new one. The circle with the X in it is the one that's going away.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
And then 2077?
It's not showing it there, but it exists. It looks like it faded away with...
I got you.
Like copying or something. It just kind of...
That's just moving that way. Okay. Sorry. There was too many dots.
And you have to scroll back up and down in the legend. Yes. Okay, so, I'm sorry. I'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the petition for Massachusetts Electric Doing Business of National Grid and Verizon New England to install, locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across Mill Road. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. A further discussion?
Yeah, I have a quick question for you in your professional opinion. You know, when you see telephone poles doing this, and I think they can be a little scary if there's, you know, bad weather or an accident, whatever. Have you found that, in your professional opinion, that sometimes a support pole can be somewhat dangerous?
The support poles?
Well, whatever you describe would be fine.
Okay. What, this extra pole that we're putting in, the support, I call it the support pole, that's going to prevent that from happening. There are several around town that have gone, I mean, when they get kind of extreme, we address them right away. This, I mean, they're all over the place. In fact, I wrote up a job on Chadwick Road recently because the fire department chief told me about it, right back at the ballpark there. It's a field of some sort anyways.
Chadwick.
But yeah, they, and I was happy to do that. When I went out there, I was like, "Yeah, we need to address this," you know, so. But the support pole will hopefully, I mean, its intention is to prevent this from happening.
To keep things up.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess I just had a bunch of questions on our end. You know, with the 11 orders of conditions that we sign off on in this, we're following up on that with building department, DPW, yes?
Most of the conditions are under DPW, and yes, they make sure when they pull their permit to do the work that they comply with all of that, including trench work.
I assumed as much, but wanted to be sure. Okay. If there's no other discussion, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good night.
A little more echo here. Okay. The volume's changed. Next, it was Item C. We have the present, presentation for the Community Preservation Committee regarding the recommendations for town meeting. I believe the chair, Mr. Callahan, is joining us this evening. And we all should have received an email, I think, over the weekend with some of, I think, what you're going to present.
Yes, good evening. Bill Callahan, 23 Lyman Road. I'm here with the project recommendations for FY '26. We had a robust submission cycle. We had, you know, well over a dozen projects recommended. We reviewed them in several meetings over February and March, and we voted on the 20th to recommend 16 projects for, 15 projects, sorry, for consideration this year. So, I'm happy to go through them one by one, or by category, or any ones you have questions on. I'll defer to the chair.
I guess I would say, has anyone had a chance to review it? If not, I'd probably ask for a quick present, just a quick overview. Maybe just a quick overview, Phil, if you don't mind, of kind of project by project.
Sure, sure.
And we'll get any specifics that may...
So, an open space. The big project this year is 470 Johnson Street, Calzetta Farm, which I know has been before you already. With the lack of field space, it's a priority for the, it was seen as priority for an open space, and so we approved that. And the amount of, you know, approximately 1.2 million, based on what we heard about the appraisal and so forth, we know, and, you know, added some additional costs for closing and other things as necessary. So, that's the open space project. And then in terms of recreation projects, the big one is the tennis courts at the high school that came through, and the committee considered this for a good while, because it is on school property, which is a little bit different than the park. And we recommended it with conditions about use by, out of hours by the public. And so, you know, we want that put in as a condition. But we certainly agree that it's a great public benefit that citizens can use those courts, and there'll be some pickleboard, pickleball put there as well. So, that was put forward to the amount of $750,000. Next in recreation was the Windrush Farm Trails. This is $15,000 to do some markings out there, because there have been some incidents where the hunters and the equestrians have, you know, come too close to each other. And so, you know, the phone app came to us and said, like, we'd like to mark those trails out, so that, you know, the hunters have a clear idea of where they should stay away from during hunting season, from those trails that we want citizens to enjoy. So, that was a public benefit there. Patriots Park, Global War on Terrorism Memorial, we approved that, subject to the findings of town council, which have not come back yet. And long story short, there, you know, we totally understand and believe that it's a great project, and something we, the one part we're a little worried about is that it's under recreation in the sense that someone could contemplate and think about the service of veterans, which is very important to do. But we're worried just a little bit, because it is pretty clear in the CPA Act that you're not supposed to create new historic monuments with CPA money. So, that's why we have Christine looking at it. So, for example, if you had a, if the memorial that was there needed to be refurbished, that's clearly CPA. But if you said, like, "I want to put up a new memorial to honor whatever," that's clearly not allowable. And so, you know, this is kind of an interesting case. So, you know, the town council is looking at it closely, and we'll wait to hear back from her. But, you know, if... But, you know, if she's okay, then we're okay. So we just want to get that written up so that we protect the town and the taxpayers from any unnecessary litigation on that front. Moving next to historic preservation, which was, you know, a big category this year. I'll talk about two projects, one after another, from the Historic Society. Parsid Barnard House Insulation and the Johnson Cottage Insulation. So both those properties over the past two, two years have had some significant work done to the interior funded by CPC funds. They wanted to make sure that the the envelope of the house was, of the houses were strong and airtight enough. And so to to protect the historic nature of those houses. And, you know, to do so in such a way that's not going to disturb anything. So we thought that was protecting the public benefit of the town's history and the Historic Society, and so we approved those two projects. Number seven, historical home repair. This is very different than things we've done before, and it's a definitely a pilot with many conditions. And here's what I would say about this. We definitely hear every year from many citizens who own historic homes in North Andover and have preservation restrictions upon those homes, which mean that they have to keep them looking in the, in the right fashion and period and so forth. And a lot of these citizens, you know, spend a considerable amount more money than they might have, you know, just fixing them for home use. And, you know, they've come and talked to us about that. I wish I remembered the name of the house I, but. What's the big house on Main Street with the?
Sauerfield.
The what?
Sauerfield.
Yes, yes, like the the owner, that owner came to us.
The stereo house.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Came to us and said and talked about what she was doing and how much sweat equity she's put into the house and how she's, you know, trying to be true to the nature and so forth and so on. And so we looked, you know, John Simons took this on as sort of his project. Looked at the, looked, you know, across the state and found that there are programs in a few other communities to do this. And we're always looking for the public benefit. So, you know, we we were convinced that there is a public benefit in maintaining these homes and period. And we also realized that it's that it's complicated and it's not something that the committee would do itself. Historic Commission agreed to run the program. In other words, they would be, they wouldn't come to the CPC and say, we would like to do this. They would come to Historic Commission and the Historic Commission would evaluate it. And would draw up some guidelines before we sign an agreement with them. You know, the CPC wants a set of guidelines agreed before the pilot, before the program is funded. But the idea would be to defray the cost. I mean, twenty five thousand dollars is not going to, I mean, we all know how far that goes in a renovation, not very. But might help with some people defraying some of the costs of perhaps like a hard to find window or something like that that has to be imported or something. So it's definitely a different idea than we've seen in the past. And we'd certainly ask the applicants to provide some sort of public access. I know they talked about like a historic house, this tour that used to happen, I think, pre-COVID and the historic, you know, Historic Society and the Historic Commission have both. Create that. So we put twenty five thousand dollars, recommended twenty five thousand dollars of funding for that.
Phil, would it be restricted to like exterior renovations that would be public benefiting?
Right.
Okay. And would it be limited, I mean, twenty five thousand dollars isn't very much anyway, but like, I don't know, could, are you limiting it per house? You know what I mean? Is there a cap, I guess?
Yes, yeah. Well, we definitely, you know, think it's going to be a work in progress and we want some guidelines to sort of make sure that it's going towards material. We even talked about, you know, looking at some sort of income limitations. So so the criteria would be, you know, who has the greatest need? You know, for for these funds. And again, definitely for exterior and that's, you know, that's how we deal with many, that's how we deal with many, many historic properties. You know, it's more, much more exterior than interior, especially in this case.
So would there be income guidelines? Like, I feel like this, is there an opportunity, Laurie might kill me, but for the, like, affordable housing trust to, like, I don't, I think it's a dicey situation where. I don't know.
We would want, we would want guidelines, like I said, again, it's it's completely to defray, you know, special costs. Everyone who came to us and talked about spending tens of thousands of dollars, like, a year before someone came to us. On Salem Street and talked about how they refinished just an outbuilding on their property and how much it costs to do the fieldstone foundation and so forth and so on. So it's, it would really be, you know, pretty limited and we'd want to have, like we said, you know, make it open for people and also have, you know, some sort of income limitation so that if, you know, it would be a definite pool of funds, right? So it's like twenty five thousand dollars for a fiscal year. And we'd want it to run, you know, sort of like there's an application process and the Historic Commission could hand out those funds as they saw, you know, most benefited the town.
And so I. I think, is it possible that you'd have to come back to, like, we would be able to see what the parameters are that you set out before we decide if we're.
We have to create a grant agreement.
Before we can, okay, because I, yeah. The one thing about though is historical homes, they're often filled and the more expensive the home, the more lead paint is generally in that. Newbury Port houses are known for having high levels of lead paint because they're well-to-do, beautiful homes. So that's the more than that, the twenty five thousand dollars will be gone immediately if it was for de-letting. So I don't know, just something a few realtors who are sitting at this table would think about.
But that wouldn't be a.
Public benefit.
Yeah.
Well, it could be exterior paint too.
It's interior and exterior.
Right, but it would have to be exterior according, so that it would be a public benefit, right?
I see. Okay, yeah, you're right. But then people wouldn't be able to move in as a family.
I think, you know, part of. But when people choose to purchase homes like that, they know what they're buying. And they know the constraints within the area in which, you know, that they have to meet the guidelines within the historic area they've purchased. So, yeah. Eyes wide open. There's no.
Windows, they've got to look like they've been there all the time.
When people choose to, yeah, so.
We would absolutely need a grant application process. We would have to have a grant agreement and then we have to have a staff member who's going to be the person who's going to be in charge of administering the grant. So it's something that we'll have to kind of walk through, but.
And part of that would be sort of the how you qualify. So we could put income restrictions on it.
And the amount per grant and all that will have to be worked out.
Yeah, it's only we contribute a percentage up to a cap. I imagine that's probably what you envisioned. Yeah.
Right, right. Okay.
And but there's an administrative cost to that for the town.
Yes.
And next is Kuchikowick Lodge, the the Mason's Building next to the youth center. Had a very productive meeting with their leadership this morning and Rick Gorman. And they're asking, you know, the building definitely meets the criteria and it's historic. They're asking for funds to replace their roof in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. And we, one of the conditions that we had as a committee, which they've agreed to, that we'd want written up in the grant agreement were, and I made an error on the front page, it should be just, it's thirty thousand.
Oh, not a hundred and five.
Not a hundred and five. Yeah, I'm sorry. I got it right on the bottom, but I I can fix, amend that. But. Thirty thousand dollars. And we would work out an agreement whereby the youth center could use it two afternoons a week for their academic programs. Which Rick was very happy about. Also that we would, the town would get a first right of refusal to buy the lodge if it were for sale. So if someone else, you know, proposed a price of whatever, the town could meet that and buy it. And that the building inspector walked through and make sure that it's safe for the youth center use. So. And definitely, even before, I'd say, like with the bloodmobiles and different community events. I'd say the Mason's Lodge has been, you know, definitely provides a public benefit to the citizens of North Andover.
Do they ever allow community programs without paying a fee? Like, like, I know that sometimes our library trustees are looking for a place for their book sales and things like that. Do they allow you?
They were very, they were very open to doing things for for free and they they do talk about reduced costs. I mean, the one burden they were talked about, which, you know, they will cover, they did say, you know, janitorially, they, you know, they incur, if someone's using the building, they have to clean it, that sort of a thing. So. But they definitely seemed entirely open to that.
Maybe potentially we could ask for a certain number of events per year like we do with.
Yeah.
So there's a clawback provision if the building sold the next ten years?
Right.
What was the thought behind that? I mean, since assuming whether it's this buyer or a different buyer, we're going to want the roof to be in good shape anyway, right?
Right, the clawback was on the funds. So in other words, if we gave them thirty thousand dollars and they turned around and sold the lodge in two years, we'd want the money back.
No, I understand the notion, I mean, I think we still got something for it, right? Or you're saying if it enhanced the sale price of the of the property by having, by no longer having a roof problem?
Plus if it's six months from now or.
Again, even if it is, my my thought is, we still want that roof, we still got benefit from the roof being preserved. Just question whether or not they benefit.
Have access, right?
Yeah, that's, we would no longer have.
If we didn't have the access, okay, great.
Number nine, again, on the, on the historic preservation is the Atkins Gate for Ridgewood Cemetery. And this is the one off to the side. Now the name of the street's going to escape me, but I know you guys know.
Marble Ridge?
On Marble Ridge, which is the main access and egress now. It seems like especially for a lot of older folks. And so, you know, that was part of their long-term plan that they put together in a master plan and sort of sent to us. This is getting towards the end, you know, of the projects that were in that. In that big study that we did. And so this would fix up the the gate. The only quibbles we had around it were that they did put in money for for the roadway, which is not allowable under historic preservation. So they would have to do that with their own funds, but they could do the gate itself, the historic gate and Olmsted, keeping with the Olmsted Way and so forth.
Each of these projects, they need to go through a bidding process, right? Because I know there was some.
No, because they're private, they they don't have to go through a bidding process.
Is that?
No, they don't, they don't follow same procurement.
It depends on the project and that would go into our grant agreement. But there are times when, if you're using public funds, you do have to follow purchasing. So it would really be dependent on the project. And we can.
So we could condition to say you need to provide three quotes for it?
We absolutely can, yes.
And we did, we did talk about. I mean, the whole process predates my, the whole process of reimbursement to the Ridgewood Cemetery predates, you know, my signing off on these things. But I have, you know, I have said that I wanted more documentation, you know, to come with the, and they agreed to change the contract type that they'll use. So they'll use like a American Architects Institute of Architects contract, which has a very specific sort of sign-off process for when they get paid and bills of materials and everything and lien waivers and so forth that, you know, is a little bit more thorough than, than what we've gotten. In the past. Okay, the next one, second burial ground tomb restoration. I am, my my next phase in sort of getting things together is to put together some visuals for later on. So I will definitely be sending some pictures along to this committee and to finance, but into the FinCom. But this is up at the second burial ground on Academy Road. They started and did sort of phase one. I think it's important to note that Ridgewood is asking for the money and they are the ones who now, you know, maintain the cemetery. And they've done an awful lot of work up there and it was very overgrown. It was very, you know, really overgrown, sort of inaccessible. They've done a lot of restoration of headstones and so forth. And what they discovered was sort of a a series of tombs, like big burial tombs that are, that they uncovered and unearthed that need to be fixed. And that is, you know, quite a hefty restoration. And really what weighed on the committee's mind was, you know, the public benefit of that cemetery with, you know, many of the historic figures in town, Cato Freeman, many of the Osgood's and the original families and so forth are buried up there. And the fact that it had gone, you know, so long without sort of, I'd say, active management. I don't know. It just seems like, it seemed as though it needed to be done. So. After that, the Historic Commission asked for historic plan, historic master plan implementation, part one. A lot of this is the kind of geographic mapping, so it's monies for a consultant to go out and map all the sites that need to be preserved and so forth. So. And I know you guys have seen the plan. We've seen the plan as well. We'll have them up for a visit next year to talk about their progress. Project twelve is the Stevens Estate Stables. The next phase of work, which is more sort of definitely sealing and shoring the building. Make sure that it's more watertight than it has before. I'm sure you've heard this before and we have funded several projects over the past few years. And we do seem to be much closer to having it, you know, ready for for active use. So we're happy to see that move along. Okay, and then affordable housing, we have two projects from the Affordable Housing Trust. One is the Affordable Housing Trust Home Repair Fund. Ms. Berzloff and Mr. Valencourt came up and explained that project to us. It seemed excellent. It's going to allow people to repair their homes and perhaps age in place and take care of some, you know, repairs that might not have been available to them. For that. So we're supportive of that and we know there's a good partnership there with nonprofit partners and so forth. So we voted to fund that project in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. And then the second project is to assist with the Fountain Drive acquisition with the Housing Authority. And we allocated two hundred thousand dollars to that. That brings the the affordable housing amount to three hundred thousand, which is about, every year we have to give ten percent to each, each of three areas. And so, you know, three hundred thousand is where we think the ten percent will end up. So we want to make sure that we, we got all that money out and sort of working. You can't just not spend it and leave it in reserve and it has to be spent at some point, but we thought it was better to get it out. And where the Affordable Housing Trust is very active, we are always happy to support it.
Is that the same process where you have to do a grant application for the repairs?
Yeah, they're actually, we're sending out the announcement because we're funding this through some trust funds as well. So this will supplement those funds, but we're sending out the information tomorrow. It's it's incomparable of people.
Right, and so and is there like a cap to the hundred thousand or is that just what you guys?
There's a cap of thirty thousand per home.
To each project, but like in total that, well, I guess.
So a hundred thousand, if it gets approved at a town meeting, will come from CPC. We have voted, I think, one fifty of trust money. So for a total.
Two fifty.
Do you sense what the demand is?
Not at this point, but we're partnering with Habitat for Humanity and they are going to be administering the whole thing.
But in theory, if it's a successful program, this could potentially grow in future years. Another way that we can allocate a larger percentage of CPC dollars towards.
Yeah, Habitat already does this. So it's not like we're recreating the wheel. So they have done this in other towns. I think they actually have done one in North Andover that was with their money, you know. So we are.
We're supplementing or helping that.
Yeah.
Taking their program that they're running and running it.
I know we always struggle to find ways to support affordable housing because the costs are so high, right? And the CPC dollars aren't as much where this is a really impactful way to get. You know, bank.
And they're for critical home repairs. If somebody needs a ramp, if there's, you know, a bathroom that needs to be handicap accessible, things like that.
Is this similar to, I know there's some restriction on CPC funds where, can it only go to homes that were acquired with CPC funds?
No, because we are putting a lien on the property.
Okay.
So it's going to work just like the down payment assistance program where it drops off after ten years. So it's it's basically a no interest loan that we put a mortgage on the property for ten years. And if you sell it, depending on when you sell it, you have to pay back. But if you keep it for ten years, you, it's it's forgiven.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, Bill.
Oh, no problem. Then the last one, we always, we. Then the last one, we always, we set aside $50,000 a year for administrative expenses. If we spend it, we never spend that much, but if like this appraisal, you know, appraisal of property or something, we can, we have that money and it's available, so we don't have to wait, you know, to do that. So we like to keep that in reserve if we need some sort of a study or anything. But it's kind of use it or lose it, and it falls right back if we don't use it. Most years we don't use very much. So that's it.
Okay. Any other additional questions for Mr. Callahan?
No, other than it's kind of a diverse list this year.
It really is.
Yeah, which is a good thing.
No, it is. And I think like, the only thing we're going to try to change for next year is make it like a two-stage application process, and kind of do the eligibility first, and then the funding second, because I think, you know, a lot of times if we get a project in February, it's a tight turnaround. We get it February 1st, it's a tight turnaround to come to you four or five weeks later, we need to get lawyers involved and, you know, and so forth. So I think making that, and other towns do that as well, so I think that would be a good thing to do, so that we're not, you know, we're not, we're very clear when we go into the funding cycle which projects can, are eligible. Thank you.
I just, sorry, I just had two questions, I guess on the Johnson Street. If, I know, it's all about if we actually acquire it, next steps would be, I mean, I know you mentioned fields, but that's sort of like a long-term...
Next step is, sit there until we know what we're doing with it?
Just the preservation project.
Just acquisition?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess that's a good question. I watched your meeting, but I didn't get a chance to, or may have missed this. Would the committee still have been supportive of the acquisition if the thought wasn't that it would be fields, if it would just be straight acquisition?
Yes, no, I think everyone definitely was in agreement, you know, whether we're working with the Green Belt or somebody on open space, you know, just that it was a very desirable piece of land, that it's got a lot of frontage, it's adjacent to other areas, you know, there's paths in the area.
But the committee is supportive of protecting it for protection's sake?
Right, right, for both, yeah.
It's also in the watershed, right?
The Lake Chicka Washin?
Yeah, right, I believe it's in the watershed.
Is it? You'd know better than I would.
It's my... And then as far as the, because I don't think we've all seen the updated design.
For the Gwarinter?
Right, so what are the next steps on that?
Right, so they still have to come back before you for approvals for the final design to come, so...
This is just funding.
This is just funding, yes.
It's really just telling us about...
Right, and we did actually also put in, for an earmark for this project as well.
That was my second question, because I don't think $49,000, right, you need way more than that, right? For the total logic?
Yeah, what's the total logic cost?
Yes, we're going to privately fund the rest of it. Ask fallen heroes and field organizations for some support as well. So we'll fund it through the public here, but a lot of that funding will be through other organizations.
So the earmark question's for $25,000?
Okay, I don't think I had any other questions at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to hear from all of our committees tonight. Next up, item D, I believe we have both Jean and the planning board share here. We're here to hear about our, first of our Warren articles we're going to hear about tonight, and I'll allow the sweatshirt. Choice.
I had a feeling.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. Okay, so we're talking, here to talk about zoning articles. So the first article that we have is to amend the zoning bylaw for an accessory dwelling unit bylaw. So as you all know, but just as a bitter review for anyone watching or listening, the state passed a law requiring accessory dwelling units to be allowed by right in certain zoning districts, in any district that allows a single-family homes as a use. That went into effect in February. We do have, since we noticed our public hearings back at the beginning of February, our bylaw will control, as long as it's enacted, at-town meeting in a basically similar fashion to what you have before you. Basically, what we did was, there are certain requirements that are hard and fast from the state. We took those and incorporated them into a bylaw. Our bylaw was actually larger as we started, and then as we got more guidance from the state, we've kind of slimmed it down into basically what we can, what we can control and what we can't control. And what we're allowed to control is very limited, but we put it into the bylaw. So here's how the bylaw works. Accessory dwelling units are basically what we used to refer to as in-law apartments. They have their own entrance, they are a self-contained housing unit. They are not allowed to be larger in gross floor area than either half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. The way we've set up our bylaw is we have set it up so that there are a couple of different types of ADU. So you could have an ADU that is either within the home or attached to the home. Those are our simplest forms in what you would basically nowadays consider basically an in-law apartment. Those will be by right in all districts that allow single-family homes, okay?
Can they be separate? Or you said attached, they can be?
So, so, yes.
Okay, they can be.
So, but this is, so we have, but we have different rules for...
Okay.
Whether, so the rules for if it's attached or within your home is that it's basically by right. If it's under 900 square feet, given the size of your, or the size of your house, half the size of your house, and it's in your home or within, attached to your home, meets all your setbacks and everything like that, you go to the building inspector, show them your plan, building inspector looks, says, okay, this meets all the definitions, go build. You don't have to do anything else. Can be detached from your home. We don't have a choice about that. That is required by state law that you can do an ADU that is detached from your home. We also have it so that it's, so if it's detached, that's allowed, but it will go by, by site plan review, a limited site plan review special permit, or limited site plan review, not by special permit. It's not allowed by special permit, but it's limited site plan review, similar to our Dover amendment, so we can look at a couple of things to, you know, go through a planning board process. We did that because we felt that there is the possibility, although not, you know, super likely, that that would have more of an impact on your neighbors if it was detached from your house. Still has to meet all setbacks and things like that, but we wanted it to go through a little bit more of a review process. So if it was detached, it goes through the limited site plan review process through the planning board.
And that could condition like aesthetics, like what it looks like, or not really?
Not really, so we do...
So what kinds of things, I guess?
Yeah, so, well, so, as we get, so, as we get into it, well, I'll go through some of that. There's, so, basically, we can, we have some design guidelines and suggestions of what we'd like, though we can't mandate too much. Basically, the guidance we got from the state said that if you wouldn't do it for a single-family house, you can't do it for an ADU. So we can't say it has to look like the main building, even though we do say we would prefer it, okay? But we can't require it because you can't say what a single-family house would look like. You can build an ugly house if you want to build an ugly house. So you can build an ugly ADU if you want to build an ugly...
Or an ugly color.
Right, but we do have some, we do have some parts that we do, where we are able to control.
And the other criteria is the multifamily or two-family?
Yep. So as to, so, one of the questions we had is can we limit this ADUs just to single-family homes themselves? And we, as part of our initial draft, we had that in there because that's what it seemed like the ADU bylaw was, or the law was created for. The state said, no, you can't do that. So if you have a two-family, or a three-family, or a multifamily, you are still allowed to have an ADU. Doesn't seem to make much sense.
But it's one for the whole structure, it's one per unit.
That's what we put in our bylaw, it doesn't have to be. So the state says you can actually do multiple, and it would be by special permit. But the state did say we can say no to that, and we have...
We have to allow one by right.
One by right. One by right.
In that case...
On the lot.
In that case, it'll fall under the limited site plan review too. So any on a two-family or a multifamily would go through a limited site plan.
Because that's one where it really, right, if you live in a two-family and one of those side is building an ADU, that really could have an impact on your neighbors who are literally attached to your building. So we wanted that to at least go through a site plan review process, so people have an opportunity to be heard and work together and hopefully be neighborly.
Can you go on top, like, can you say you have a traditional two-family, can you go up?
Yes, as long as it is within the height limits of the district. So that was one of, one of the things we wanted to do, we said it couldn't be higher than the actual building itself, and we were told we couldn't do that. So...
But, but you do get relief from, you do have a cap on...
Correct, the same cap that it would be for anything in that zoning district.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, because I thought, if it, maybe I'm just comparing it to Dover incorrectly, that I thought Dover couldn't limit building height.
No, you can, you, height is one of the things you actually can do in Dover, but we're still limited in the comparison to what is allowed in the district. And we can't be more restrictive on ADUs than whatever else is allowed in the district. So if your two-family can go up to 47 feet, then your ADU can still go up to 47 feet. But you're still limited, I mean, one of the things is that you're still limited by all the setbacks and things like that. So some of the places where you'd be more concerned about this is in like a downtown area, but you're going to be limited by your setbacks anyway, and the size of your house anyway.
Some towns have less restrictive setbacks for accessory units, but in our town, accessory unit or the principal, other than a shed, has the same setback. So a detached garage has to meet the same setback as the house itself does.
And this may be a dumb question, but the dimensional requirements of an ADU, the 900 square feet or half the principal dwelling, is that the unit or the whole structure? Right, if I'm...
Like living area, or...
Well, if you're a two-family that has a gross floor area, which, what controls the ADU dimensional requirements? The half-floor area?
The unit.
It's the unit, okay.
Yeah, so if you put one above a detached garage, it's the unit itself.
Got it, okay.
Correct. So the ADU, some restrictions we did put in, it can't be used for boarding or lodging, so it can't be a motel, a bed and breakfast, can't be a short-term rental, has to be subordinated in size to the principal dwelling. We've asked, you know, where practical, that it meets the architectural character and be compatible with the design standards. Again, it's, those ones that are going to be detached especially are going to go through the limited site plan review, so we'll have the opportunity. I think when people go through that, they're going to be more willing to make it so that it is neighborly, because you're going to hear comments and things like that. So that's what we have. It has to meet all building code and sanitary code, so if you're on town sewer, and your town, and your sewer Title V allows you to have four bedrooms, and you have a four-bedroom house, if you add an ADU, you're not in compliance now unless you upgrade your septic system, right? Septic, I said, but your septic system. So it has to, it has to be able to work with what you got. So you do have to meet Title V, all sanitary codes, and all building codes, as well as all zoning dimension requirements. We've asked, to the extent that, you know, stairways can be enclosed, if they be enclosed, we've asked that they're, tried to try not to make new curb cuts, to try not to put it in the front yard, to try to make utility connections, run through the principal dwelling. Those are all things that we were initially wanting to condition, but we're told we couldn't, so those are our, kind of, we're trying to lay out our preferences.
It can be in the front yard?
Yeah.
If it meets the dimensional requirements?
As long as you still meet the setback required. So it's typically 30 feet in a residential zone, it has to still meet that.
Because our zoning, the only thing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jean, is that the only thing that we outlaw in front yards currently is swimming pools, probably as a public or private kind of nuisance thing, you don't want, it's just running up and jumping in your swimming pool unprotected, a safety issue, but that's the only thing, so we really couldn't. Like, you can put a shed if you want in your front yard, most people don't, but there are ones that, that work. So, you know, again, if it's going to be detached, most likely if it's in your front yard, it's going to be detached, so it would go through the limited site plan.
So even if they put the ADU in the front yard, they can't have the swimming pool on top of the roof?
That would be, yes.
That would be the violation.
Yeah, unless it's indoor, unless it's enclosed, but I like the creativity. Trying to think if there's anything else. That, that, those are the basic, those are the basic ones, only one per lot, and it is by lot, so it's not based on ownership or the users. We update the table to match all of those things, and I think that's...
I think the only other thing of note is, we know there's former family suites out there that are being operated as an ADU, and so we ask in that situation, kind of put the onus on the owner to come in and, and to make it in accordance with the new definition of an ADU, and work through the building department. And if they do that and pull a permit by a certain date and finish construction within a year, then the fees and things like that to bring something into a conforming status would be waived. So that's an attempt to get all those, that we know are out there. I mean, there's no doubt there are some former family suites.
What are, like, I guess, what are some of the reasons that it might not be in compliance with...
Just give me an example.
Family suites can be 1,200.
Because they're the size, okay.
It could have been 1,200.
Primarily, that's the...
And not in compliance is the person that was permitted to live in that unit is no longer living in that. And, and again, of no...
But now they can...
As a refresher, for now, it doesn't have to be a relative, and it does not have to be owner-occupied on the property, either the principal or the accessory dwelling. And also, we did have the opportunity to send this by Margaret Hurley, who works in the Municipal Law Unit, and so she has given us some comments, a lot of which is when we started softening some of our language. It was cautionary comments for the most part, but she has reviewed it, and we seem to be in good standing at this point.
Maybe you're going to get to this, I noticed you have a number of these provisions expiring July 1st, 2028?
No, so the old, so that, so, we can jump to that.
You might have bumped too far from my head.
No, no, so that is, so, that is the family suite bylaw.
Okay.
So what we've done is sunset, we've sunsetted that as of July 1st, 2028. So basically, and we had this discussion a few months ago when we were here before the board, whether it was worthwhile to keep the family suite bylaw, and we determined that it really wasn't, that it would only potentially help a very few select people, and that the enforcement of that would be difficult, and having two different sets of criteria would also be difficult for enforcement. But in case there is anyone that wants to build under the family suite bylaw and have that, those specific rules, we figured might as well give them a little bit of time to do that. So if you build any, anything that currently exists as a family suite, as long as you still meet all the criteria, would continue to exist, and our ADU bylaw doesn't change that. So as long as the person's living there and it's, you know, stays within the kind of criteria of the 1,200 square feet, then you can keep on doing that until it naturally expires. If you want to build a new family suite in the next three years, you could do that as well. Okay, again, there's going to be limited reasons for you to want to build under the family suite, because it's much more restrictive than the ADU. So it really has to be a specific situation where you want more than 900 square feet, and you want, and you want the limitations of the family suite bylaw. After July 1st, 2028, you wouldn't be allowed to build under that, but everything that exists and is legally permitted would still continue.
Yes, I, so I think this question here, you know, last time, so if someone comes in, rushes in now or the next few years, gets a family suite built for 1,200 square feet, that provision sunsets, presumably as it sunsets, our enforcement is going to be also kind of sunsetting over time, correct? Of enforcing the family suite bylaw that's no longer there, is someone finding a way around an extra 300 square feet that requires them to then tell them to go work with their stove?
There isn't really...
Potentially, but there's, there's no real enforcement right now anyway, so it wouldn't change.
Right, okay.
It wouldn't change.
And also, what was the number? How many have we promoted in the last 10 years?
No, I...
12 or something?
Yeah.
And only four of which were over 900.
I guess the question is, why not just sunset it now?
Because I did have a couple, we did have a couple people come and say that they were considering doing the family suite, and they wanted the option. So, and we figured where we're, why not give them the option while we're doing this? And I don't think it's going to be used very often, I don't think, I think it's very unlikely to be used, but we figured why not, why not give people the option just in case they wanted to have it? And those, so those two, we did have a bylaw for limited site plan review, which just basically takes what we have now, our Dover bylaw, and incorporates the ADU use into that. So now it has the Dover uses, it has the ADU uses now as part of that. And then we had two other articles, one which are basically housekeeping, one for...
Real quick, what's the definition of short-term rental?
30 days or less.
Thirty days or less, okay, thank you, sorry.
Uh, consecutive, thirty consecutive days. If you, you can't rent it for a month or less, if you wanted to do a six-month lease or something like that, you can do that, or two months, but it can't be basically thirty days or less.
KBNB.
Correct, that's the purpose.
Thank you.
And then we had, any other, sorry, any other questions on the ADUs?
Other park, uh, go ahead.
Yep, alright.
How broadly are we, how broadly is attached, uh, you know, defined? Because obviously if you build something in a unit that's clearly attached, or it's like, you know, building adjacent to it, you know, uh, attached, but like, I've seen buildings that, uh, you know, we've seen buildings that are attached, you know, there's, you know, there's the structure, structure, roof connects, um, or it's connected by a breeze, breezeway, is that attached?
Probably end up deferring to the building commissioner.
TBD on that?
Yeah, I mean.
As creative, as people get creative?
Right, I mean, I think our definition of attached really means.
Physically attached.
Physically combined with the initial building, but you're right, you know, if it's, if it's got a breezeway.
Currently, it's not if one corner touches.
But I, 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 you know, again, that, we'd have to defer to the building inspector probably on that, but I would think that that has the same impact as a detached rather than attached where it's actually part of your building. I mean, if you're going out, outside, opening a door and physically, you know, submitting yourself, so again, yeah, if it's, if it's an enclosed breezeway, again, it's degree, so I don't, I don't know yet.
Thank you.
It's a good question. Uh, yes, parking requirement, yes, uh, one.
One, one space.
One space.
One space per ADU.
Per ADU.
Unless you're within a half a mile of public transportation, right? Does that include a bus? I don't know if you know the answer to that, but.
No, they, they changed that when the regulations came out, because we were a flag route, we were gonna be.
Yeah.
Everybody within half a mile of the route, um, but they did change that when the guidance came out. Technically, we probably have some homes within half a mile at the undermass half, that would be the only area. And so i- if that's the case, we cannot require any off-street for that.
I know this is gonna be a super rare instance, but if you are a two-family and you add on top, right, that's gonna kick them into the commercial code for, so they'll have to.
Three or more, three or more units becomes commercial and they'll have to comply with all the building.
All of that, which is a huge.
Sprinklers and all that.
Thing, yeah.
Yep, yep, yep. Yeah, again, and, I mean, attaching it to a multi-family, it doesn't really make sense, you just built another apartment, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it, it's allowed, but it's.
I can't even imagine.
Improbable.
Yeah.
Um, and then we had, so we did a floodplain amendment, which we seem to do every about two years, two years or so, as FEMA updates the flood maps and the language, we update it accordingly, uh, so Amy Maxner, uh, kinda spearheaded that. And then the historic barn, we just had to, um, based on the attorney general's comments, just had to make an amendment to how the applications are handed in, and so really just a housekeeping issue?
I think last year we talked about considering expanding that, uh, I mean, how many people have taken advantage of that opportunity?
One.
Yeah, only the one that brought it forward last year.
Oh, one, okay.
Yeah, so on that, so in, in use, but that's about it so far, we haven't really seen the kinda fruits of, or heard anything about that, so I give it another year or two before we can see about that. Okay?
Any other questions for eight towner Jean?
No, it was very interesting, little confusing at times, but very interesting.
That's how we feel.
It's something going around.
We, we appreciate the work, we really do, we know it's a lot, lot in the weeds, so thank you both.
Thank you.
One.
One, oh, just the one.
Okay, uh, keeping us moving right along, uh, next up, item E, we have an update on the fiscal twenty-five school budget. I believe we have superintendent Lathrop, uh, who's been patiently waiting. I was gonna say, we're hearing from everybody tonight. Give you guys a few seconds.
Depart the room. Thank you for your service.
Thank you all.
Nice to see you.
Thank you all. Okay, superintendent Lathrop is here.
Thank you, and I have Gail Dowd with me here, she is our interim finance director that's been working with us this year, I'm not sure if she's had an opportunity to meet you all, she just said to me a minute ago, can I stay in my seat? And I said, no. Come on.
We're happy to meet you.
Yes. Um, so we shared with you on March twentieth, a budget update for Northlander Public Schools, I think you all should have that. In that update, we shared with you that we're projecting a budget deficit of four million and eighty-three thousand dollars, uh, that's a five hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase from what we had been reporting, we had been staying steady around three and a half million. I think the last memo that you received from me was January twenty-second. We recognize and understand that this is kinda more of a burden that we're placing on the town, um, I'm sure this is both concerning to you as it was to us. We did share with you in that memo that, um, the reason we have brought this forward, or one of the reasons that we were able to identify this, really did come from the FY-26 budget that we created, um, and by, by creating a very clear FY-26 budget, we were able to see that there were some things that were not included in our current FY-25. So while we have been including encumbered costs, there were things, there were some projected costs that were not put forth. There were two drivers that we listed for you, one, special education expenses, um, we've had some current, um, new, we had some potential and we've had some new out-of-placement settlements, or some settlements with costs that were higher than we had anticipated or not anticipated, and then some other unanticipated costs, um, those being, we did have a rodent infestation in four of our schools this year, that treatment came at a cost, uh, we had to eradicate the visitors first and then, uh, an expensive treatment plan to keep them away. We also didn't include spring coaching stipends originally, um, in FY-25, we've had some greater substitute needs, um, and one of those needs are long-term leave of absences, so there are some leave of absences that we know about, that staff inform us earlier in the, you know, if, if they have a planned leave that's coming up, uh, but we had unanticipated leaves, which has us paying for the person out on leave as well as the substitute. There are some funding plan that we've put forth for you, uh, looking at ways that we can, um, hopefully, um, cover this deficit, seven hundred and fifty from ARBA allocation, a million transfer from the finance committee reserves, two million, two hundred and sixty-eight million from free cash and sixty-five thousand from special ed stabilization appropriation. That said, looking forward, we do believe that FY-26 is sufficient, um, we have captured all of the needs for FY-26, uh, understanding that this requires, FY-26 will require significant layoffs, as you've probably already heard, we have, um, sent about forty, a little over forty, um, layoff notices, um, to our staff, um, currently, so moving forward for FY-26. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll look up to the board to who'd start.
I think this was pretty clear, but I'm assuming that going forward, you're accounting for those things you weren't expecting this year, like rodent infestations and, you know, maybe additional out-of-placement, like, like, can you historically look back and say we average one or two more than we expect every year, so let's anticipate the cost of that, like, eh, you know, we, it's, I know.
So we did go through that process, I know, um, I have been asked that, we did include some placeholders, can use different words, in the special ed budget. I will caution that that's based upon sort of what we know, it's a very fluid approach, and we did take, it was a delicate balance to include an amount for ones that we saw on the radar, but you have to balance between how many you put in versus how many you do not, because we do know for each one you put in, there are potentially other cuts you have to do in order to fund it. So we did take a look at it and we did include items that we saw on the horizon that we were currently monitoring.
We did adjust it, look at this year and move it forward.
We started with that, but then we did include others that were currently in negotiations or that we saw, but again, very fluid.
We're gonna be rodent infestation treatments from here until forever, I would imagine.
Right, so we, not necessarily, so, I mean, I do think that across the Commonwealth, there were a lot of issues with mice, and if you watch the news, there were other school districts that had issues, um, I think our, our, uh, treatment plan, so now we have a preventative plan in place, as opposed to a, you know, emergency.
Should go to maintenance less.
Yeah, that, right, that makes sense.
Which, I can appreciate that being fully unanticipated, I, I'm just, how are spring coaching stipends unanticipated?
I think there's a distinction between, uh, we knew they were going to happen, it was whether they weren't necessarily included in the projections that were being prepared, so it's.
So this is still kinda peeling the onion a little bit?
This is peeling it back to say what, we're not, you can't encumber the coaches because you don't know who they're going to be, so a lot of it is stuff that's being done, and they had included two out of the three seasons in some of the previous projections.
Not, again, not that that's the lion's share of the challenge we have here, I just, I wanna be sure.
I will say, I think the lion's share for, for these has definitely been the unanticipated number of students that are receiving additional services than we had anticipated, and again, incredibly fluid changes on a daily basis, but we, we are taking steps, we're applying for extraordinary relief through the circuit breaker program, so we're attempting to get additional funding.
Putting different checks and balances in our school district, Lynn O'Neill, our director of special education, has been meeting, uh, very closely with Gail, but also working with her education team facilitators, looking at the horizon, what might be coming up, as opposed to sort of, um, trying to deal with it in the moment, uh, looking to the future.
I know this is looking ahead a little bit, but do you anticipate maybe a year or two down the road, we might be able to accommodate some of those students in the district once we get a handle on?
Yes, I'd like to think that there are some that we'll be able to accommodate in district, but I don't want to, I wanna, sometimes when a student goes out of district, it's hard to bring them back in.
Sure.
But I think what we wanna do is moving forward, you know, so we are looking at that, um, even, you know, next year in terms of some of the program we have now, um, making sure that it's solid programming, meeting the needs of our students, and there's already some changes in works for FY-26.
Decrease the need for the out-of-placement going forward, it's great, thank you.
I was, oh, good. I was just gonna say, also this year FY-25, we have been trying, uh, if we have a vacancy, to not fill those positions, our math director left, we didn't fill that, that position, we have a secretary that's leaving, um, at the end of this week, we won't fill that position, we'll, uh, work internally to be able to support the needs of, of those places.
So at this point?
Mm-hmm.
Do we feel like this is it? I'm, I'm just, I'm, I know it's, I know it's really, I know it's really hard, and I'm really putting you on the spot in that regard, it's, how do we feel?
I do feel we took a very hard look at everything, I will, I've done this in other places, I always caution that the one area that is the hardest to say definitively is going to be the special ed. We are, we do challenge it, we are monitoring it closely, we are going, you know, we're, we're challenging every expense that comes through, we're asking people if, if we're doing it, what aren't we going to do, so I do feel we have looked at everything and it's based upon what we know, I can't guarantee there.
Well, lemme, lemme ask, and this is my own, you know, at now April first, right, how much, what could happen, could, could we still have students come in district or go out of district from a special ed standpoint between now and the end of the year, is that?
Could have an emergency situation where somebody may have to go out of district at this point of the year, um.
Less likely.
It would, eh, you could, there's always the opt, the chance of forty-five day placements is the option that you could go from a less restrictive to a more restrictive setting, depending upon the needs of the student, but again, I, I think I'm talking to the special ed director almost daily, now to say if you have something, tell us right away, so we're, and we are submitting for extraordinary relief through the circuit breaker program, we hadn't heard yet, we won't know until probably mid to end of April if we're able to receive funding, additional funding we can utilize in the current year for that, so.
That extraordinary circumstance, is, is our district, um, do we have an exceptionally high amount of, of, out of district placements, is that why, or?
It's, it's a funding mechanism that if your costs exceed more than twenty-five percent of your prior year, you're able to submit a claim and then they'll assess it and you may get extra funding depending on how much funding the state has, so we've requested that they submit it, even if we're not sure if we're going to qualify, we wanna basically take every avenue that we can.
The circuit breaker in the following year.
So, if I remember correctly, we took it.
The threshold goes up, is it?
No, you don't get to do this.
Don't get that much.
Yeah.
It's like a borrow from the future.
So we did extraordinary relief this year.
Okay.
Which means we have a circuit breaker next year.
So you sort of get into a cycle.
Becomes structural.
But it's not like you can only do it once and then you don't qualify, you could get it every year, even though, okay.
So we're, we're looking at it, we're, you know, the pros and cons of when to do it, so again, I just feel in full disclosure, we wanna let folks know, we are attempting to look at every funding source we can, but that would be the only area, I would say, we, we feel we have a handle on it, but I cannot guarantee the special ed side of it, but we would be able to say now, if we came back to say we had X number of students that had a change in placement or additional services that were required.
Uh, in a leaves of absence you referenced that, sometimes you get a good heads up and you can really plan, others come up, is there a process in place that, are, you know, employees required to give a certain amount of notice on that for you to plan?
If they have a, if, it's something that they know is going to happen, but if somebody becomes ill or falls down, breaks something and is not able to work, those things come up that we don't know about.
Okay, and that's separate from maybe a medical reason that someone needs to be out, where we may have some insurance coverage or no?
This would be an instances where an individual is out and if they're utilizing, so they're still getting paid, so they could be utilizing their sick time, we have to bring somebody else in to cover.
Got it.
For them, so there are instances you're paying two salaries for one position.
Okay. Nope, you're good?
Yep, I'm good.
Sure.
Now's the time.
The finance committee has not yet voted on the reserve transfer, I do anticipate that we will be requesting them to do that at their next meeting, um, and I think Dennis was planning on bringing that up on Wednesday, that we'll have to fill out that application, but that is the plan, that way we go into town meeting knowing exactly how much free cash we need to ask for to offset the budget.
If I remember correctly, you said the warrant article wasn't up to amount.
Yeah, so it's, it's open-ended right now.
Okay.
Um, so I will.
Wait until the last second.
Yeah, I will not have you take a, um, position on that until we get a little further along in the year, but, um, yeah, right now we have it as an open end up.
Definitely, that just makes sense, Melissa, so I'm glad that you're down that road.
Okay, we know how hard it's been.
Yeah, and again, we recognize this is the second year in a row that we've been here sharing this information with you, nobody wants to do it, certainly not the two people sitting in these seats, um, but we are confident that moving forward in FY-26, we have a solid budget in place and we can live within our means.
We appreciate your, we appreciate you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Welcome, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, next item, it's not getting shorter, uh, item F, the town meeting warrant article recommendations.
Ms. Chair, I don't know if you wanna consider taking any of the items that, um, we have just so people might be able to, um.
I suppose.
Head home before we do that work, I know that, I don't know if anyone's here for the poet laureate?
No.
No, but we do have a licensing.
Okay, so we can, uh, we can move to large section.
No, she's for Stevens Schoolage.
Stevens Schoolage, uh, if it pleases the board, we can go ahead and, uh, make a move to licensing, so I'll take a motion to enter licensing.
Salute, second.
Motion, second, all is a favor?
Aye.
You're licensing, sorry, you're on the spot.
You put me on the spot. We have Deanna from the Stevens Schoolage for their annual entertainment license.
Hi, everybody, I'm Ashley Pilar, here, also.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Director, um, there, at one fifty-three Checkering, and yes, so we've just, um, put in, I know we're a little late on our entertainment license, but have submitted that, so.
And it's for, you wanna go over what it's for?
Sure.
For what you guys are gonna have for programming?
Sure, it's specifically for a couple of things that are coming up, um, we have, as you may know in the past, we've done sort of a, a spring blooms event, um, in the, in late April, early May, this year we're actually, that's been about two to three weeks, this year we're condensing things and making it a little bit more robust, so we're doing So, we're doing about four days, May 1st through 4th. And then we'll do something similar again in the summer, in August, when it's kind of the peak season for Stevens College and the gardens there. So, we're making, we're just having a lot of things happening over four days. So, everything from a kid's corner, to people can go in the house, to, we will have some music, we have after-hours events on Fridays and Saturdays. The times are a little bit off, so we'll be like, it's more like 5:00 to 7:00. We will not go past, I think she put it down a little bit later.
With the music?
With the music. So, we're going to be done by 7:00 o'clock. The music we'll have is just a duo, so it's guitar and piano, so it's nothing wild. But looking forward to this event. And we'll have some vendors as well. Not food vendors per se, but we will have some vendors selling crafts and things like that.
Any questions? And I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move the Select Board Act and its licensed commissioners approve the annual entertainment license application for the trustees of Stevens College placed at 153 Chickering Road with the amendment that the hours of entertainment be ended at 7:00 PM all seven days of the week.
I'll second.
I have motion of second. Any further discussion?
Can I, wait, go back to that? Because this also would include winter lights, which might be later than said.
What a fine question to bring up. Between us, we're not doing winter lights this year.
I just don't want to...
Winter lights and everybody watching.
What was that?
I said us and everybody watching.
Yes, we're not doing winter lights this year. But more will come out on that, but for many, many reasons.
Okay.
So, but we will do something, but probably smaller and not as big.
Are you doing the pumpkin walk?
We are not, we did not do this that, this past year. So, we, I have 14 properties, and one of my other properties is in Beverly, so we do a huge month-long Halloween event there.
You're up, busy, man. And they're all, and they're all venues like... So, the 7:00 to 7:00 thing is sufficient for anything you would do. I just don't want to approve...
Why don't we say, why don't we say eight?
Because it might...
Just in case.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I will accept the amendment to my amendment at 8:00 PM.
For every day.
And I will say, we are planning a, an event at Ward for the 250th American Revolutionary War Anniversary, so...
That's great.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right, so I have a motion, a second, and an amendment.
An amendment to the amendment, accept the amendment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your patience.
And I'll take a motion to close licensing.
I'll move to close the meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
I'll second. Motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. All right. Do you want to just get the votes out of the way for poet laureate, even if no one's here?
Sure.
And just end on warrants? Okay. All right, I'll skip quickly to item G, request use of town common on July 4th from 11:00 AM to 12:30 PM for the reading of Declaration of Independence. I will take a motion.
I'll move approval of the town common on July 4th, 2025, from 11:00 to 12:30 for the reading of the Declaration of Independence. It's the same thing they've done every year for the last many years, and it's a popular event.
And we'll get all that in the motion. A motion?
With a little bit of editorial.
A second, yeah.
Second, part of that.
Do we know when the fireworks are going to be?
We do?
We do.
We're not going to play right now.
Oh, that's okay.
We know it's the third, but I don't, don't...
Okay. I'll wait for you to confirm.
That's okay.
Did you throw a contingent on that?
No, it's not. I was just, since we're talking about the 4th of July.
I participated in that event last year, it was really fun. Great service.
I have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, that is approved. Okay, item H, vote to release the appraisal for Johnson Street. As you recall, we discussed this at length, and we just need to move forward so that the town can continue to move forward that CPC application. So, I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board approve the release of the appraisal for 470 Johnson Street.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and a third, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And lastly, item I, request the poet laureate committee to use the town common on May 3rd, 2025, with a rain date of May 10th, 2025, from 12:00 to 4:00 PM for the Anne Bradstreet Poetry Contest. I think I've seen some signs around town for this.
I will move approval.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, sliding back to item F, town meeting warrant article recommendations.
All right, you ready? Let's go. All right, so Article 1 is reports. So, as you know, I forget sometimes that some people are on their first time doing this, I apologize, Dave. So, the town bylaws require us to accept the reports of all committees and departments that spend money, and that's basically our town report.
Okay, and we're going to take a position on each of these articles, one at a time.
Yes, we are.
So, when we're on an article, we're going to need a motion.
I'll move approval of Article 1.
Support.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Recommend, recommend, favorable action.
Favorable action on Article 1.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, 26 to go.
Got it. This is, it's a little bad, 26. No, it's not bad at all.
Article 2 is permission for myself and Superintendent Lethrop to sign three-year contracts. Any contract, contracts that are over three years, any contract that's over three years does require a approval from the Select Board.
Okay. I think that's pretty standard, we've done that every year. I'll take a motion.
Move to recommend favorable...
Look at you, you're doing great.
Favorable action.
Action. On Article...
On Article 2.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Article 3 gives the Select Board the authority to grant easements. So, often, if you think of a granting of an easement, it's usually utility?
Yep.
We don't, do we have to do that annually, or is that present...
We do it annually.
I'll move favorable action on Article 3.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Article 4 gives us the ability to accept easements. And so, an example of that was when we built the senior center, we accepted easements.
Other way around. Article 3 was accepted, Article 4 is granted.
Oh, sorry, that's my fault for a tick. So, Article 4 is grant. That's what I get for making my own list. Article 4 is grant, so sometimes what will happen basically, and this is actually a same example, we granted easements to Minko, and Minko actually gave us easements as well so that we could do the dual parking.
Seems straightforward.
Move to recommend favorable action on Article 4.
Second.
I have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Article 5 is unpaid bills. So, as you know, if we want to pay a bill that's from a different fiscal year, we have to bring that bill to town meeting, and it's a floor for that to vote. At this point, we do not have any unpaid bills, and it's likely we'll be withdrawn, but I just want to hold it. I would think by now, we would know, but I will hold it just in case.
In not, in voting unfavorable action, this is not a strategy for the budget, right?
No, it's not a strategy, yep. So, no action on that item right now.
All right, I'll take a motion.
You don't do anything, we're just going to let it sit.
Or let it sit?
Let it sit.
Okay.
If an unpaid bill comes up, I'll let you know. I may even be able to withdraw it, but I'll check in with them. Article 6, the salaries of elected, so this sets the salaries for the Select Board, the town moderator, and the school committee.
Move to recommend favorable action on Article 6.
Second.
A motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next article is Article 7, that is the capital plan. We did make a few small changes to the capital plan, which you can see in your warrant. The reason we made those changes is that we had a few items that we were hoping to pay for through the general funds, and with the budget issues that we faced, we were unable to do that. We also changed our recommendation on how we're going to pay for all of the water and sewer. Originally, we were going to bond all of it. We decided not to do that. We're only bonding the larger, two larger water projects, and everything else, we're using retained earnings.
Can you remind me what changes we made?
Yep, so we, one second, I'm just pulling up. We pulled in the vehicle for the assessor, which is wedged in assessor's inspectional vehicle, $40,000. We also pulled in the assessor's software replacement, which was $75,000. Those were two things that we really had hoped to not have to do that way, but unfortunately, we did. And those were the only two.
Okay. I think everything else, we've discussed at length at this point. So, there's no other questions for the town manager, I'll take a motion on Article 7.
And I should note that the Finance Committee has voted already to recommend the capital budget.
Great.
Move to recommend favorable action on Article 7.
I have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so then Article 8 takes us to the Water Department, CIP. This is debt. It includes two projects, and those two projects are, one of them is 400 Great Pond Road, and the other one is improvements in repairs at the water treatment plants.
So, the demo for Great Pond Road, were you able to put that under the Water Department because of water?
Because it's water quality. Yeah.
Excellent, okay. So, and that is, do we have a breakout as to what's the demo and what's going to the water treatment plant?
Hold on one second, just...
2.2? And we have estimates on the demo?
One million is the demolition.
How much, sorry?
One million is for the demolition.
And that's a, that's a hard estimate at this point?
That's a hard estimate at this point, yes. And it sounds like a lot, because every time I think, I'm like, oh, my God, that's a lot. But there is a significant amount of work that needs to be done in order to bring that building down, and the determination that there could be light paint or asbestos, and needing to protect the water source is really important. So, we want to make sure it's done correctly.
So, so I guess two, I have two questions. One, assuming this passes, town meeting, how quickly are proposing demolitions start?
So, we'd still have to go to bid on the demolition. And we wouldn't start it until after July 1st, so we, it would probably happen probably in the fall.
In the fall, yeah, okay. My next question is with regards to debt for the Water Department. Is the debt service to be paid out of retained earnings?
So, it can be. We do have, historically, we have had water and sewer debt that we paid through rates. We had not taken new debt for a while, so if you remember correctly, last year, both of those budgets actually went down because debt had fallen off. This is going to be such a small payment that I think it probably makes sense just to use retained earnings to do it, and we would just transfer retained earnings each individual year. But as debt continues to fall off, it may make sense just to capture it in order to keep things level. We do have in the CIP this year, the two rate studies, and so that's something that we would talk to them about as we move forward to determine whether or not it's worth continuing to pay it through retained earnings, but the retained earnings in both accounts are relatively healthy.
Okay. And the lake level study that we commissioned, where was that paid from?
We used...
Was that a grant?
We got a grant for that from the state. I was trying to figure if it was up or off the state, but we got a grant for that from the state. It's the twofold project, if you remember correctly. It both looks at our lake level, and it studies all of our tributaries.
Yes.
It relates into the flooding.
Right, okay, it has the downstream impacts, okay, got it. Okay, sorry, that's enough water questions.
And we just kicked that off recently.
Yes, it is our only source of drinking water.
We don't get water from the Meramec.
We do not get water from the Meramec.
We don't get water from the Meramec.
We do not get water from the Meramec.
One more time with people in the back. All right, I will take a motion, Article 8.
I will move favorable action on Article 8.
Second.
A motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Article 9 is CPC.
Okay, I think we're going to need some time with this one.
I would recommend that we hold anyway, just so I can get an answer on the historical monument. I'm, don't, I, I mean, I do not personally think it is...
Going to be...
Going to be eligible. So, I think it makes sense to just wait so that we can make sure we have...
I'm fairly cer, well, I mean, is this now the time to at least have a discussion about, or when would this come back before us to have a discussion?
Let me do it at our next...
We can do it at our next meeting, yeah, and then we would just report at town meeting.
Okay, all right, I'm fine with that. I do think there's some precedent. I remember we talked about the witches' memorials that were definitely not allowed, so, okay. Okay, well, we can, we'll table Article 9 until our next meeting.
Okay. Article 10 is revolving funds, so if you remember, annually, since the Municipal Monetization Act, we have to vote this as part of a bylaw. Our revolving accounts, our accounts that we use, basically are funded by user fees, and those user fees pay for different items. This year, one of the new one that you're going to see is very exciting, and it's the EV charging station. We have Stevens State revolving account now added into this, and that is because the state did approve that revolving account. If you remember correctly, we did special legislation in order to get that.
I'll take a motion. Or questions for the town manager, anyone has?
Motion for favorable action on Article 10.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a second. Any further discussion or questions for the town manager? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 11.
Article 11 is the general fund budget. The Finance Committee did vote to recommend the budget, and this is the budget that includes the $68.2 million school budget, as shown in the warrant.
Is that blue cyan?
I think you're calling it magenta.
We're done with colors.
Yes.
We're done with colors. This is the blue plus budget. Okay, I think we've obviously discussed all of this at length. Does anyone have any further questions or discussions for the town manager regarding the budget that we haven't addressed at some point over the last several months?
And just so everyone knows, the latest version of the budget, I feel like we're like, it's like a bestseller novel that we keep updating, is available on our website now, so if you go to the website and click on the budget, you are going to see the latest version of the budget.
That's the ClearGov digital budget book is, or...
Just a link to a PDF right on our page, so you can go right to it and flip right through it, and it is now available. The FAQs are updated. Superintendent Nye and some other local officials are going to be doing, with Andover CAM, budget presentation as well.
That's great.
I have two questions. The 960 for Greater Lawrence, is that the accurate number now?
So, that's the number based on what we know for enrollments.
And didn't we have an assessment from them, or that, is our, was that last year? Did we pay?
I think that was last.
Didn't we, there was like a capital project? There was like a capital project.
There was a capital project, yes, that was last year. And that actually didn't have any, if you remember correctly, we authorized debt, but it had no impact on the budget.
Yeah. It was like a hanger?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Will you be able to tell us what pages changed so we can update the?
We absolutely can tell you what pages changed. And it's actually not as much as, it sounds like most of the budget is the same, but we can absolutely tell you and get you a new book, new sheets.
Yeah, just the pages.
New sheets.
Just the pages.
All right, as the moderator says, we're about to make recommendation on $135 million, folks. I'll take a motion.
I will recommend, or I'll move to recommend favorable action on Article 11. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Articles 12 and 13, we usually take collectively, they're the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund budgets. As you know, the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund is budgeted separately from our general fund budget. Basically, all of that is accounted for differently and paid for by user fees.
Okay, so back to my earlier question, is the debt service number in here does not anticipate?
No, because it takes about 18 months before debt really comes on. So originally, what we do is we take bands and we pay the interest through that. And then in a subsequent year, probably fiscal year, well, probably fiscal year 27, I would say you'd probably see half of a year of debt payment.
Okay. Thank you for humoring the dumb question, appreciate it. All right, I will take a motion on Article 12.
Motion to recommend favorable action on Article 12, being 13?
Yeah, sure, why not? A motion on Articles 12 and 13, have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 14.
So Article 14 is the Special Ed stabilization transfer. As I noted on her chart earlier, the superintendent has that listed. I actually have it at a lesser amount. That's okay. But we'll, and we'll kind of work through that a little bit, but we have it at $45,000.
Because that's what's remaining.
So I, what I anticipate is that her number may be based on which, on interest that she is aware of. The $45,000 is the amount that was definitely in it last time I checked, and that's why I used that number.
Okay.
So if not, we might be $20,000 short on what was?
We'll be going into, changing the free cash number, yes.
Got it, okay, got it.
Got it.
Okay. I'll take a motion on Article 14.
Motion for favorable action on Article 14.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 15, assuming 14 passes.
So in fairness, I do think we should wait on taking a position on Article 15 until we've heard from the citizen petition. So Article 15 is dissolving the Special Ed stabilization account. We do have a citizen petition to make a transfer into that account, so if we dissolve it, we can't transfer it, and I think we need to just hear them together. You know that I'm in favor of dissolving it. I do have a plan to basically take the metrics of the Special Ed stabilization account and transfer those metrics into the finance committee reserve, so that they would serve the same purpose and have the same safeguards in place. And perhaps you could hear me on that the same day we hear from the citizen petitioner.
That's what we'll do.
Okay.
That's fine. And that's April 14th, I believe, is coming in, correct?
I keep calling it April 12th, but yes, it's April 14th.
You can come on the 12th.
I will be here, yes.
All right.
Article 16, I also think we should report at town meeting, just so we have a final number. That is the general fund adjustment. I will say that I am very concerned about the amount of free cash we're gonna have in fiscal year 27, and we should all be realizing that our capital plan in fiscal year 27 is not gonna be great. But we'll continue to work on getting you that number.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll report town meeting on Article 16. I would like to report town meeting on Article 17 as well, in the hopes that we may not need this article. Article 18 is our annual OPEB transfer. As you know, OPEB is other potential employment benefits. Oh my God, I can't talk, thank you, post-employment benefits. After 8:30, I just stopped going downhill. We, as a policy, do put $75,000 in per year, plus $11,000 for any new positions. There are no new positions, and so that's why it is at $75,000 this year.
Okay. I will take a motion.
I'll move, move to approve, motion for approve of now, I lost it.
I'm glad it's not just me.
Motion to approve support for Article 16.
We are on 18.
We're on 18.
Oh, we skipped 16 and 17?
We skipped, yeah, yes, the town manager asked if we make recommendation at town meeting on 16 and 17.
Apologies.
You're good.
All right. All right. All right, so I have a motion to recommend favorable action on Article 18.
That's what I said, yeah.
I have a motion and I, do I hear a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Article 19 is a placeholder for snow and ice. We are currently in a deficit of about $700,000 in snow and ice. As you know, this was an interesting year, but I am and I have you report at town meeting on that in the hopes that we're currently reviewing our budget burn rates, that we may be able to absorb some of that into our budget rather than have to go to free cash. Article 20 is our annual transfer to stabilization. As you know, we do have a financial policy that requires us to have 0.5% of the previous year's general fund in it. In order to keep us at that, we need to transfer $101,015.
Pretty close.
All right, sounds good.
I'll move to recommend favorable action on Article 20.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 21 is a transfer into capital stabilization. We do have a financial policy on this as well. We are over the amount that we need to have in there because we transferred all the one-time revenue sources from Amazon in, and so we're asking just to put $50,000 in.
If we're over the amount we have to have, why would we move any?
We don't have to put anything.
Or is this just like good, healthy savings?
I, I like to put it in because I feel like if it falls off, sometimes it falls off.
Forever.
Yes, so I like to continue just putting a little bit in. We are taking.
And what we just talked about, going down the road, that extra $50,000 might be.
In free cash, well, I'm also saying, but we're concerned about free cash for next year, right?
Right, we are, and we could choose to use the capital stabilization to pay for capital items that we perhaps wouldn't typically. We are using, we are proposing using $3.6 million from capital stabilization this year. So while we do have a healthy balance in there, I, it's one of those things where I do try to.
It'll go somewhere.
I do try to, yes, it ends up in one place or the other, so.
Okay. I'll take a motion on Article 21.
Move to approve favorable action for Article 21.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that takes us to the planning board articles.
Do you want to read all those?
There is five of those, yep, we just heard from Eton about them. The first three are all about accessory dwelling units.
All right, so Article, so let me try and understand. Article 22 cements the zoning bylaw. These all, separate articles amend different sections of the zoning bylaw, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so.
Should be, and planning has recommended, has voted, or no?
They might be voting tomorrow.
They may not have voted yet. Do you wanna wait till they vote?
You could do it.
Yeah, we usually.
Can we do it pending?
No, well, we have one more meeting on the 14th.
The 14th.
And that's the deadline.
Before the budget, before the warrant.
Oh, I thought, okay.
So we could resolve some of these on the 14th.
Yes, we like to try, we try to do as many in advance as we can because it's a lot of work on the 14th to send to print, but I think they'd be fine to leave these and wait for them to vote.
All right, so, all right, so planning board has that for, okay.
Okay, so we're gonna leave those blank, which takes us to the two citizen petitioners. Both of them are coming on the, I'm gonna say the 12th, but it's the 14th. They're both coming on the 14th, so I think it probably makes sense to leave those to them as well.
I would agree.
Look at that.
Pretty good.
Pretty fast.
Well, we skipped half of them, but that's.
That's fine, you know. I'm gonna do a calculation, I think it was more than half we got done.
Okay. Thank you very much for putting it together, I know even though it's only 27 articles, we know how much work it is to keep this organized, especially in the midst of ever-changing budget. So thank you both.
Of course.
And the rest of your teams for your work. Okay, that brings us to, that was all of our new business items, and moves on to consent items. We've got two, it looks like three consent items, accepting donations to the youth center, the senior center, and to the festival committee. I will take a motion.
I'll move approval of the consent items. Donations to the youth center, donations to the senior center, and donations to the festival committee for sheep shearing in the amount of $1,055.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. I did notice that the donations to the youth center were substantial. Is that a part of?
That's the field.
That's the fields fundraising?
That's the fields, yeah.
And they just, they hold it? Okay.
What are the, do we know like what the total? No.
It's like, it's basically, we charge per user and they pay a user fee annually, and it goes into our fields, our savings account for new fields, which technically is supposed to be saved for the recplex.
Got it, okay. So these are essentially user fees that the groups then hand over.
It's calculated on a per-layer metric.
Got it, okay.
But it's not, it's just for, but it would be if we took care of the, like, it would be, it's not.
Does that sound like?
Yeah, it is.
I was trying to follow.
It, it's a fraction of what it would cost to maintain the fields.
It is a fraction of what it would cost to maintain the fields, and it is much less than most communities accept because they're typically doing their players themselves, and we have a funny setup, yes.
Setups like this.
Yeah, that's how, that was an accurate depiction.
Laura had asked a question about what the fund balance is, and from finance, it's $519,621.
That's before this donation? Or?
Yes, this was from January.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the consent items. Any further discussion or comments or questions?
Nope, we'll take it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, item seven, approval of minutes from March 13th, 2025. Has everyone had a chance to review those? That was our dual board meeting with FinCom on the budget. And if there's no other questions, I will take a motion.
Move that the select board approve the open session minutes of March 13th, 2025 as presented.
I have a motion.